Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for January 10. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. From Mr. Sherman. So I think our attendees are sort of. All right, and Mr. Sherman will be joining us. To make his comment. Hello, Mr. Sherman, how are you?
Madam Chair, is that your recognition of me and I should start making my comment?
It is, so you're now moved over, so you're on our Zoom and we can see you and we would appreciate your comment, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'm, I want to speak about Department of Public Works.
Actually, no, David, can I ask you to do one thing first? Just state your name and your address for the record and then proceed.
Sure, David Sherman, 100 Rosemary Way.
Thank you.
So I want to speak about Department of Public Works. I basically think of DPW as unfortunately a failed department for two reasons. One is the way the Water Main Project was carried out on Central Avenue this past fall. It was done in a way that, 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 first of all, it was an absolute mess along the sidewalk. Multiple safety hazards were created that police, I was in contact with the police about the safety hazards. They said they couldn't police all the safety hazards that they created. They, 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 they even left it open to terrorist threat, which DPW assured me that, no, that's not actually the case, but because of a particular characteristic. And I actually worked out myself a way that a terrorist would be able to, would have been able to poison the water through, through their, through their temporary piping. If I could figure it out, a terrorist can too. The, I'm not willing to share in public session exactly what that method would have been, but I would.
Thank you.
The, and then they're done with it and, and the road is now a mess. It used to actually be a really nice parking road and now, and now it's not in that area and they've, they destroyed the fog line in an area that's really not all that well lit. And so that's a safety hazard. So, so that's one thing. And if you, if you want to say that, you know, it was done by a private contractor, fine, I think DPW hired the wrong contractor and I would not hire them again and I would, and I would make them repair the damage that they did. Second reason is because they have this awful habit, and I've caught them on this a couple of times, of leaving their, leaving their vehicles running at idle, you know, in a parking lot. And, you know, the last time this happened, I was told, oh, the worker was on a break and it was a hot day. Well, you know what? Where he was on a break, it was the parking lot at Claxton Field. Across the street from that is the Cogswell Building, which is, which, you know, is climate controlled. Down the street is Newman School, which is climate controlled. And he could have gone in there and had a nice cooling break with the engine off and not wasted our taxpayers' money on gasoline and, and not done his part to destroy the climate, which the last I checked, everybody else is concerned about. So I really think DPW really needs to be looked into as a department that really needs to make some changes, both in the way they carry out their projects and in the way they administer taxpayer money.
Okay, thank you for that comment, Mr. Sherman. I think there's probably a couple of things that we'll check into just to follow up. We had some of those comments earlier in an email. A couple of things are new, but, but I do appreciate your coming tonight. I know that it's been actually a few meetings that you've been intending to come and making that comment, so thank you.
Thank you. There was a family illness that I had to deal with, that, that's what played me, and then I had a Zoom problem.
There you go. You're here tonight, thank you for giving that input. And I don't think we necessarily want to respond to everything, but I am quite certain that the road, in fact, will be restored. I don't know about the timing, because of course, supply chain issues caused much delayed timing on that project. I know we're now in the wintertime, I don't know what that timing looks like. Perhaps the town manager can give us a little bit of info.
A little bit of info is that when you do a trench like that, you have to let it settle over winter before you can do a final pave.
Okay, all right. But I hear your concern with the fog line and, and all of that. I'm, I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done in the interim, but we'll take that under advisement. So thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you very much. Do you see anything that could be done about their gasoline usage policy?
So I don't comment on things like that at public polit, or at public comment time, but we have taken your input and we will go back and have a discussion.
Okay. How will I hear follow up with that?
I will be happy to call you in the future.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Great. The next agenda item that we have there. Oh, we have somebody else for public comment that we weren't aware of, okay? Hello, Mr. Donald.
Hello, thank you very much.
Hi, just so, so just for the future, it works out a little bit better for us if we know in advance that you're coming, but you're welcome to speak. And if you could just start with your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ross Donald and I live at 25 H Chamber Street. And I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I've decided that we can continue saying that until the Chinese New Year.
Sounds good, same to you, Mr. Donald, Happy New Year.
Yeah, I have two points. One is just for some notification that I'm, I've, I've given the Needham Housing Authority an open meeting law violation complaint. And I hope they respond favorably. I like the approach, you, you state a violation and then you suggest what might be done about it. So I do have some suggestions on that point. It's basically access to meetings. Meetings are being held, people are being hired, and we always had, as a resident, we were always sort of in a position to be, to access, not participate, may not have any questions for them, but just to be there when the, when the candidates for these various positions are, are interviewed and hired. So I have a question about that. And if nothing else, I'm going to ask the Attorney General for some clarification on when and how the open meeting laws apply. The other point, however, is that I'd like some response from, not now perhaps, but about the, the board as we go along, the Select Board has the, or the requirement in some ways to make a selection and appoint a commissioner to the Needham Housing Authority. Of course, you have the option to waive that requirement if you don't feel that there's a suitable candidate, or what happened the last time. Everybody went along with the idea that they had a good team there. So the, the duty to appoint, make an appointment was waived. However, that comes up, I understand, every year, but the, the town meeting has weighed in on it with an article. I spoke with Teddy Eaton about it. My understanding is that you're still obligated to make an appointment or waive that. So I'd just like to be, have some clarification on that. There, there is a new seat, a seat that's being opened, it's being voted on. So how does it factor in if they can only make one change a year? How is that going to work? So that's my question, thank you.
So I don't know the answer to that question with only one change per year. I don't know if there's any information the town manager has. Otherwise, we'll take your question and we will get back to you.
Thank you very much.
We can certainly get back, but the board's position is that there is a tenant member and that the, they were treating the tenant member as their appointed member until the open seat, but I'll get you the exact calendar.
All right, and I, I didn't actually recall that that was an annual appointment that we needed to make, but perhaps it is. I thought there was a term associated with it.
I'll get back to you.
So we will find out, Ross.
Yeah, and even if there is a resident member, and the resident member, Janice Bennett, was voted in, she was not appointed in any way. You, you accepted the idea that she would be acceptable as a resident member when you, you, what you did was waive, and my interpretation, I'm just looking at it from a distance here, that you decided to accept that as a resident member when you could have had appointed a second one and there could have been two resident members. So that's my interpretation, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I think we can, are there, are there no further hands tonight, Kristen? Thank you. We can close public comment. I will just share with the board and with the public that. I had a busy 25 minutes before this meeting, about 25 minutes before the meeting started, I had a call from Reg Foster, who is calling me on behalf of the Needham Housing Authority to let me know that they had a fabulous kickoff meeting yesterday for the redevelopment project at Chamber Street and wanting to let me know that that happened, that the work is underway and that they look forward to coming and talking with us and getting our input for that project sometime later this spring, once they all have their feet under them. So we're all, that's a project that's been long in coming to fruition and is starting to be real and we look forward to it coming into, into being. All right, the next item that we have on our agenda is in fact, a public hearing that was continued from December 6th for an alteration of premises for Needham Food and Beverage LLC doing business as the Heights. It is my understanding that we have been asked to continue that hearing again due to an illness of one of the parties who would have been present. So it, am I the only person with a suggested motion, updated motion? Let me just read it for the board if somebody could then move and second it. The suggested motion is move that the Select Board vote to continue the public hearing relative to the proposed alteration of premises for Needham Food and Beverage LLC to Tuesday, January 24th, 2023.
So move, second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0. Saying 4-0 reminds me that Mr. Marcus Nelson sends his regrets this evening. He is in fact at a work engagement that he had to be at, so. Have him back on the 24th. The next item is the proposed dedication of the Liberty Tree. Paul, if you could come join us. Pick your, pick your microphone, please.
I'll sit near the gym.
There you go, from the Exchange Club, so tell us about the Exchange Club's latest.
Thank you, Madam Jim, Chair. Good evening and thank you for scheduling the Exchange Club at this meeting. Tonight I'm proposing the installation of a Liberty Tree in Needham. So a little background, the Needham Exchange Club celebrated its 75th anniversary in 2022. To recognize the event and in continuation of its history of donating to the citizens of Needham, the club elected to purchase and plant an American elm tree, elm tree, descendant of the famous Boston Liberty Tree at the Needham Heights Fire Station. Over 75 years, Exchange has been involved in community building in Needham. Our work has encompassed both physical projects such as shelters at Greensfield, Memorial Park, building pot lots and service projects throughout town. In addition, in addition to our sponsorship of Freedom Shrines at the schools and celebratory Independence Day events, we, we have regularly offered youth programs, senior programs, and recognition programs designed to honor and educate Needham residents. Exchange goals have not changed, unity for service, all dedicated to enhancing the quality of life in Needham. We chose the American elm for several reasons. It's a beautiful tree and a nice compliment to the new and very impressive fire station at Needham Heights. Excuse me. The elm tree was everywhere in towns and cities around New England. It's a very large, tall, beautifully shaped tree, creating shade-like settings all over the area. Until Dutch elm disease hit, that started a slow death of all the elms we had in every city in town. Researchers have been working on a new hybrid, more resistant to the borra that caused Dutch elm disease. The Elm Institute, Institute in New Hampshire is dedicating, is dedicated to raising disease-resistant trees. And this is a very beautiful specimen of that work. I'm hopeful it will be here for the next 50 or 100 years, but there is no guarantee. Mother Nature will control that. And in the interim, we'll enjoy it. A little history of the Liberty Tree. At the time of the revolution, a great American elm stood in the center of colonial Boston. The large tree became a meeting place for patriots opposed to British laws and rules. And a demonstration against the detested Stamp Act that was held under the tree, it became known as the Liberty Tree. Our founding fathers, Paul Revere, Joseph Warren, John Hancock, and Samuel Adams regularly held their meetings under the tree. The famous Boston Tea Party was planned under its branches. British soldiers hated this tree and often punished men thought to be against British rule right under its branches. The tree was a rallying point for independence in Boston. On the last day of August 1775, as the British Army evacuated the city for the last time, they cut down the tree before they left. The American elm was our first symbol of freedom because this wonderful tree bore the name liberty on its trunk. It is currently memorialized in Boston's South End. Having a liberty tree in our community will give our residents an educational opportunity to explore our founding as a country and the events leading up to the Revolutionary War. Should not be forgotten that Needham farmers fired shots heard round the world on April 19th, 1775. We need to preserve, protect, and pass on this important part of our country's founding. The tree will help our town and our neighbors be more aware of the history and significance of the struggle to create the United States of America. The tree was planted last year at the fire station. Placement was coordinated with the Director of Parks and Forestry and the Chief of the Fire Department. We marked its installation with an Arbor Day, Arbor Day 2022 ceremony on site. Many thanks to Eddie Olson and Dennis Condon, Tree Warden and Fire Chief respectively. I also want to thank and recognize Eddie Olson and other town employees for their help in planning this project and carrying it out. This time, Exchange Club specifically requests the following. One, permission to install a stone with a bronze plaque on site in order to briefly explain the history of the Liberty Tree. The plaque will be about eight by 10 inches. It will cost $509 and will be funded by the Exchange Club. Two, erection of a street sign adjacent to the tree on the berm on Highland Avenue indicating the location of the Liberty Tree. There is currently a sign there that could be moved further west on Highland Avenue. Funding is requested from Town of Needham Resources. Very much. Be happy to have any questions or answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. The tree, elm trees, when they grow big and strong, are beautiful trees for sure, and I'm glad that they're disease-free specimens that are starting to come back. Are there questions from board members?
Sure, and thank you, Paul. Thank you for all of your efforts on this planting. I am a member of the club and was there along with my colleagues when we planted that tree and had everyone, it was a very nice ceremony. And I think it's fitting only now that the tree is there to actually describe what the tree means. And we do have in our packet the words that you have chosen and pretty succinct and to the point, that'll fit on an eight by 10, right? So definitely support this and keep moving forward with the effort, so thank you.
So because when I wrote the proposal, I envisaged that someday my children and grandchildren, and maybe your children and grandchildren, will be researching in the town of Needham Archives, so I wanted it to look good. So I enlisted the aid of Tom Keller, writer and published author, to help me write it. And this is a draft of the text that will be on the plaque, we're going to probably make a few changes.
I was going to say, eight by 10 is a big, takes a big rock to fit an eight by 10 plaque, that's what I'll say. Are there other questions? Because I have a question about the sign on the street.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I love the project, it's great. And you're absolutely right, this will help, you know, to educate generations thereafter. About the plaque, as you, as I'm reading it, the elm is descendant of the original Liberty Tree. It was the 1933 Cornell Project that saw six elm trees after Dutch elm disease. So I think this is the descendant of that project, it was in 1933, and I think it went to 60, 65. So I think these trees were grown from that. So check on that, but I think it's still wonderful, that's why they're disease-resistant.
Yeah, I put in the descent, it shouldn't say a descendant, it is descended.
Okay, it is, yeah, it is a descendant. And the other thing, while we're at it, I suggest you had to learn Latin phrase, "Elmas Americana," because it's truly, it's not a European elm and is a, is, there's also white elms and other type of elms, but this is truly an American elm. So you probably want the Latin term in there too. And also, the British cut it down in August 1775, but they evacuated Boston in March, March 17th, 1776. So you have it here that they was cut down the day before. You might want to just revise that.
Okay.
But were you on really firm ground? Yes, if I could tell a story.
I know it's going to be a good one, Kevin, I can't wait.
So two alarm riders, Paul Eby and William Dawes, send off the alarm on April 18th. Revere does the northern route and he alert, activates other alarm riders. William Dawes does land route. So he's going down Orange Street in Essex, right by the Liberty Tree as he crosses Boston Neck. Apparently he's a, plays a great inebriate and gets by the guards and activates other alarm riders, so out of Roxbury and JP. One of the alarm riders is a British deserter. He comes through Newton, crosses Kendrick's Bridge into Needham Heights, or one for Needham Heights. And it goes right to the Eaton Farm to alert William Eaton. The Eaton Farm is where your elm tree is planted. So from one elm tree to another, it's a great story of how Needham, that country entered or started the American Revolution and Needham's role in it. So it's actually really great synergy, so I'm very excited, this is a great project.
Maybe I'll work that into the.
There we go. I'm just going to say, it can't be an 11 by 17. I had a question actually related to the street sign, and I, I don't know who's looked at the position of various signs. I don't know if this is something that TMAC might look at to make a recommendation about or where.
We'll talk to Public Works, the board's action is the memorial, so, and the policy requires you wait another meeting, so that's why it's not on here. And we'll get feedback from Public Works on what makes sense for the street sign.
I hadn't seen any pictures of where the signs were and I just sightlines and all that, it's good to understand what's where and how many signs are around.
We'll work on that.
But this looks like a great project and I think you need all the history to be part of it.
They could like hang out next to it. Be like the tour guide. Be the tour guide. I would like to see the tri-corner hat or something.
I suggest it's just the glory of Christ.
Well, I think, you know, Lexington and Concord get all the props and we don't get any notice here. The six people on the tablet at Memorial Field who paid, who paid the ultimate sacrifice.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Two and a Mills, you know.
Never met, aye, yes.
Thank you for coming, Paul. It's a great project, we are happy to have the tree, it's going to be beautiful, so.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your service to the town as well.
If I could have Mrs. Eaton come up. She is next on the agenda to talk with an election law update and the early voting schedule. Somebody said to me, you mean we have early voting in the spring? I think you think we have early voting all the time now, Teddy, right? Is that it? What are we going to do?
The law says that the, there is no early voting on local elections unless the Select Board opt to have it. And I have a recommendation from the Board of Registars, and actually, I have a copy of each one of these election schedules and on the back is the.
I think I have one, but yeah.
Is the proposed scheduling for early voting.
Right.
And we're suggesting Saturday, April 1 is the last day to register to vote because the state election law has changed to the 10th day prior to the election, unless we can get an article in town meeting accepting a certain mass general law allowing the Select Board to change that date to a Friday or another day, which I'm discussing with Kate. But right now, we're discussing Saturday, April 1, from 10 to 4, and then the week of April 3 to April.
7.
7th. From basically 10, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And then Tuesday evening for one evening session from 7 to 9 p.m.
And you feel like that's doable by you and your staff? Called it to that one week, can work.
I don't think we need 14 days early voting. The vote by mail is the select, the Secretary of State is not sending out postcards to all the voters in town. We will have early vote by mail with applications they can get through the website, through the town, through the Secretary of State's office. And any person that registers to vote receives an acknowledgement notice and we will send that early vote by mail application to them at the same time. I'm still learning some of the laws that they keep changing because the laws for state elections and the laws for the local elections are just a little bit different. But I think there would possibly be reimbursement for early vote by mail, or early vote in person for local elections. We're working on. Well, we're working with the state auditor right now to get reimbursed for all, and most of it's personnel that we needed to have for the early voting, the vote by mail processing. We had 9,600 applications for the state election for vote by mail. For state election, we had over 6,000 for town, state primary. And then we had, which really annoys me an awful lot, is 840 ballots were dropped off at the town hall on Election Day. And my feeling is maybe they could have gone to the polls. And if they took them to the polls, we have to get them back from the polls because they have to go to the town hall and then go back to the polls. So a little bit of these laws need to be amended, but the town hall, the Mass Town Clerks Association is working on that.
Okay, and, and you're working with Kate on the language to try to rationalize last day register to vote so that it doesn't obligate the town to open on a Saturday.
Correct.
Presumably.
It's an acceptance of a mass general law. And there's confusion on that also because the Secretary of State says it has to be on the Saturday unless you accept this general law, and the Attorney General says, no, that's not true.
We have a new Attorney General.
We do.
And things may change.
Things may change. Are there any questions for Teddy?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to take this opportunity really to thank you and to thank the poll workers and to thank your office. You know, this is a major sea change that years ago we would never have considered. And, you know, we see the fruits of your labor and we see everyone work so hard, but it's an amazing turnout that you've been able to deal with for the spring election, for last fall, as you just said, the mail-ins, just a lot of moving parts and just, you know, I think I speak for this board to say, thank you for all that because it's an amazing feat and it's not something that you probably signed up for or anyone signed up for and then.
Nobody signed up for it.
Right, so I just want to thank you for that. And yeah, I think this calendar makes a lot of sense and looking forward to seeing the turnout for the election, so thank you.
So I do need you to vote.
Yes, we will, yes, thank you.
It's really important that, that we do vote this so that you have some prediction. It's really important that, that we do vote this so that you have some predictability in your life. But I agree. Totally important, Teddy. And, and I also appreciate your feedback about the number of days of early voting. It's clear to me that citizens of the town really appreciate the opportunity to, to vote early and certainly a lot of people have taken advantage of it.
They appreciate the vote by mail. They appreciate the early in-person voting.
Yeah.
And it's all good and it's positive, but there's a little too much. I mean, we have to kind of organize it so it's not quite as time consuming for the, for the election workers and the people involved.
Yeah.
But thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board approved the in-person early voting schedule as proposed by the town clerk.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Four zero.
Thank you. Just one more thing. This has to be done for every local election. It's not.
It's not universal.
And it is not. Every town election, you will see me or somebody come in and say, oh, by the way, we have to vote for in-person voting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to offer.
Words, ma'am. Thank you.
Terrific. That brings us, actually, if somebody could move the motion.
Move the consent agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Are no appointments this evening? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero. All right. The next item we have tonight is the mural for Needham Heights from the Needham Cultural Arts Council.
So we have, hi.
Amy, Charlie and Paula.
Yeah.
Joining us tonight. Good to see you guys.
Yeah. Thanks for having us.
You guys are having a big year. We can't wait to see the arts master plan, but this is the first.
It is a big year.
Yeah, we're gonna see you more often.
And the last time we saw you, we were getting an operating budget and that has gone really well for us. We had a record number of applications to our grants. And we're in process. So keep up your eye out for an announcement about those grants coming out.
Terrific.
So we're here to give you a little update about the Needham Heights mural project and what we've been doing the last year. After some ARPA allocations of $20,000 for those two murals, we designed a process to get this mural accomplished. We did a lot of location scouting through the town. Checked out a lot of locations and Needham Heights seemed like an underserved location for the arts in Needham. We don't have any public art that we know of there. So that was why we chose that spot. The ARPA, you're gonna love this, Kevin. So when we got the ARPA funding, it's federal dollars. And so we were really inspired by the Works Progress Administration, the Federal Art Project from the, after the Great Depression, there was 100,000 paintings and murals in the United States created by 10,000 artists. And what's exciting about that was that it wasn't really for the cultural activity of creating the art is to employ the artists. And so this funding, we decided we are going to select a professional artist, a muralist to do some work for us. And we've never done that before. So that's new for us. So that was really some of the inspiration behind that. So we designed this request for qualifications process. We had 20 submissions, which was a really high quality work. We created a selection committee, which was our, we have a public art subcommittee that's part of the Needham Council for Arts and Culture. It's made up of six members. So we also selected three community members. We had someone that was representing the artists, someone representing the residents of Needham Heights. And a youth vote, which was a senior at Needham High School. She came aboard and actually she was almost the most helpful out of everyone. She really was so smart. So that was Tara Standard. And we also had Eddie Brechner and Topher Cox, who we now actually will be joining us next week for our, we have three new members for the council. So we're at 13 total. So so that went really well. And the next part of that process was interviewing the artists. So we had three finalists, the selection committee whittled down out of those 20, we chose three and we hired those three artists with a $500 pay to create a site-specific design proposal for the location that we selected. And the location that we identified is on 922 Highland Avenue. It's West Street in Highland Ave on the side of like Carewell Urgent Care. And it's just like, it's a big large scale space, 50 feet long, 20 feet high. And so these three design proposals came to us and we posted that all on our website and we did a poll. And we were surprised, we had 660 different votes, basically, which was really a big response. We had some engagement from it. And there was a clear lead in, in the poll. There was also, the selection committee also had a piece that they, after interviewing the artists and seeing all the pieces, had a recommendation that they gave to the Needham Council for Arts and Culture. So now I'm going to, without further ado, pass it over to Paula to tell you about the piece itself that we selected.
Yes, it is with great pride and that the Needham Council of Arts and Culture, along with the selection committee, with the support of the NCOZI property management and the building tenants, recommend the installation of the blossom by RC at 922 Highland Avenue. So as Charlie mentioned, we interviewed a ton of artists and all of the work was really amazing. It was really hard to kind of narrow it down to this. Obviously, the polls helped. The selection committee felt that RC's blossom work really, you know, was the most relevant and unique for the community's purpose and very inspiring as well. Our, the artist Ryan Christensen, who goes by RC, he's got, he's got well-known recognition in the region, also nationwide. The committee was impressed by his professionalism. He really took our inputs in and really created something very specific for Needham itself and for to our needs. And, you know, it's the ability to provide a concept which has a universal appeal to the broader community. So using the town flower, the pansy, which symbolizes thoughtfulness and consideration. We hope this is going to be a huge, you know, bonus and a vibrant artwork at the community. A little bit more about the artist, I think you can see that there. That's how it's gonna look like. It's amazing. It's really colorful and it's really gonna brighten up the, the area there. So RC is known for his paint splash style of large-scale street art. He's been defining his skills for over a decade. In 2015, RC announced his inaugural North American Live Event Mural Tour, where he took his skills on the road. He's pre-painted this huge painting eight by 12 live in front of the audience, you know, event walls in front of thousands of onlookers in many of the largest cities across the nation. Since then, RC has created hundreds of murals, permanent large-scale works throughout North America, Australia and Europe. So he's international. So yeah, we're really, you know, excited to have him work for us. He's also worked for the likes of Smithsonian Institute, Major League Baseball, American National Park Services. And it's currently developing a collaborative body of work for the Walt Disney Company as a Disney fine artist. So he's huge. So we're really lucky to have him. So yeah, as he travels the globe, RC is continuing to demonstrate his work, his growing desire to serve the community with his mark of wherever he goes, he wants to leave that and really bring back humanity through his artwork. He currently resides in his hometown of Connecticut. In his statement, I will read out, blossom encompasses the courage to preserve, to grow and to embrace change. Pansies are the symbol of Needham. Not only did the town declare April to be the pansy month, but for the pansy to be the official flower of Needham as well. My mural reflects the community that I create them for and I believe that the beauty of the public art. My hope for my design proposal is to create blossom in the spring of 2023 and unrelied to the Needham Heights community during the month of April, pansy month in Needham.
That will be so much fun. Yeah, we're hoping there is a pansy festival during that time. So if we could maybe coordinate those. Apparently watching him spray paint is like a, you know, entertainment on its own.
Your first ever kind event.
We know the pansy people do. Yeah. Yeah.
Time to do one of those time lapse videos or something, watching it get put on the building.
Well, what's fun about the connection too is that the pansy was, is the town flower because it was the grandfather, invented here in the grandfather of N.C. White, who was like such a well-known artist and are connected to our community. So that's pretty cool.
Totally cool. Awesome. So I, I hope this is the first of many.
Yes, definitely.
That's always my wish with these.
A lot of walls to cover.
We got a lot of locations.
This mural, I'm very excited.
Very excited.
Since I go past that all the time.
That is a very busy street, central location.
Well, and since our coffee store there is mainly not open, it will be nice to have something. Questions? Comments, thoughts? Everybody else thrilled?
This is fantastic. Thank you.
And I will miss the drab. But I guess it's amazing.
All good things must come from them. Right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
And I like that you have a shirt that says, thankful.
And we're thankful to have Amy, who has been like just amazing at chasing down everybody and coordinating all the tenants and all the, the property management companies.
I heard there was some chasing involved. So thank you for that.
Well, it's my pleasure, but that was the easy part. The, the two of them have done all the legwork with the committee and it's really extraordinary group of volunteers that just contribute so much time and effort and passion to this. So it's a real pleasure to work on.
Can't wait to see the next one.
There'll be. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is our outdoor dining update. So Amy's gonna stay because that's more Amy and it's more Katie. So people will recall that when we last left outdoor dining, we thought it was gonna be regularized and then the state kind of said, no, everything could be the same again. So everything kind of stayed mainly the same again for the summer. And our discussion once more is how are we gonna regulate?
So it might be Groundhog Day. Thank you for that, Madam Chair. I do want to note, there's a team of people implementing outdoor dining that are in addition to Amy and myself, but Miles Tucker, Alex Clea and Lee Newman, planning community development and our building commissioner Dave Roach. So just want to give them a shout out because they're actually doing the day-to-day to make it happen. So yes, by way of background, we just concluded our third outdoor dining season. We had 20, 21 and 22. And the wrap-up kind of for 22 was really that we were operating under this dual system. So that was what you're alluding to. So during the pandemic, one of the first executive orders from the governor was let's relax all the rules around outdoor dining so that businesses can stay open, people can stay eating outdoors. So in Needham, we created kind of a administrative level approval for outdoor dining to get it up quickly and, but still safely. And those executive orders kind of kept getting continued, a little bit, continued a little bit in the same way that all Zoom public meetings kind of follow the similar iteration. And so at one point, we knew that the state flexibilities were concluding. We came to this board and said, do you want to formalize it and codify a policy for outdoor dining on public property? You all did that in October of 21 and then town meeting also updated zoning in October of 21. We thought maybe we were behind the eight ball. We were way ahead of the game.
So we're one of the only communities that has that in place, right?
We are a handful. Maybe you can speak to.
So I belong to a group of economic development directors in the greater Boston area. There's probably about 40 different communities involved and many of them are scrambling now to put it together. So I have to say, you know, kudos to Needham for getting this done way ahead of game.
It was clear to us, I think, that citizens wanted this to continue. And so I'm grateful to the town for helping us figure out how to put a structure in place.
Yes. So the pivot in 22 for us was we had this formal system, but then the state did extend its flexibility. So basically we said to businesses, you know, please start applying for the formal process. But if you had something approved under the flexibilities, we'd let it continue. So it was kind of the best of both worlds. That was what kind of was behind the 22 outdoor dining season. So now heading into 23, it may be Groundhog Day. The state may extend the flexibilities again and we will pivot accordingly. But we're still full steam ahead, assuming that they will expire April 1 of 2023. Which means if the state flexibilities expire and somebody's not formally permitted, they wouldn't be allowed to operate. So we're trying to shift everybody over to the formal system. So for 23, our focus is really three things to kind of get everyone in the queue. I'd say the high points for the board is that the team has been in touch with every single restaurant that had outdoor dining more than once, regular communication to see what they need, encourage them to apply. Ultimately, it's up to them if they do so. But we have more who have applied than who haven't. And we're slowly working folks through the system. Some need to go to the plane board and the slipboard. Some just want or the other. So we're working through that list. The other item that was outstanding was ensuring accessibility at parklets. So all of our outdoor dining restaurants had had accessible tables on sidewalks. But the on-street parklets are not ADA compliant. That is something we knew that we would need to address. So our recommendation for heading into the 23 season is for anyone that has an approved on-street parklet, that they be required to have decking to make the on-street parklet flush with the curb. The only alternative ways to achieve compliance with accessibility is to do a full curb cut, like on the street, which we wouldn't do at those locations. Or to go to the state and ask for a variance and get a ramp out into the parklet. You need one foot for each one-inch drop. So you lose a lot of real estate basically in the parklet for the ramps.
And I think we determined that that didn't make sense actually when we looked at that for a couple of.
No.
Restaurants. So.
Right.
Yep.
And Amy and I went to the Commission on Disabilities and talked to them about the idea of the decking. They were thrilled. They were concerned about the business's ability to afford those. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy for how we are proposing to address that.
Sure. So the select board did approve prior funding for the Small Business Recovery Grants for round one and round two. And so we are going to be asking for additional funds to be put aside for restaurants for grants, a one-time grant to allow them for funding or to make them compliant, ADA compliant. It would basically be used for decking. So the funds that would be, that were left over from the ARPA funds, the Economic Development Funds to be used for one-time grants. And the timing of that would be the end of January, early February to allow them enough time to apply and be able to get the supplies in place to be able to be ready to go, assuming these, these grants would be only given to those who have actually gone through the formal process of being approved for outside dining. So that would be contingent.
And the last thing we are keeping an eye on for 2023 is fees, only in the sense that in 2021 and 22, we did, this board voted to waive all fees. So the fees are in place for 23. The maximum fee for outdoor dining that a business could have is $750 for, if they took up three parking spots on the street. And application fees and fees for the sidewalk usage all kind of feed into that maximum amount. So I did get a question previously about, as a reminder, what was that relative to the meter revenue that would be foregone? We had estimated $900 for one meter if it was fully maxed out and utilized from April through December. $900 is kind of the foreground revenue. So $750 was kind of where the board landed as a comfort level for starting this. And we will keep our eye on other communities as they formalize their policies in 23, 24, 25, whatever, and see kind of, you know, we didn't have any comparable communities to really look at. So as that evolves, we'll come back to the board. That's it. And everyone should eat at a local restaurant.
That's right. And, and we'll have the comment back for people to take out when they eat there. So it's all coming. Any other question? So are you expecting if these grants are going to go out January, February, that we will see or the town will be seeing some proposals soon from additional restaurants for what their outdoor dining will look like under these revised regulations?
For people formally applying.
For people formally applying.
We are in touch with every restaurant that has an on-street parklet now. So we will, that will be part of the conversation Amy has with them with the grant is to get them kind of formally in the queue.
Okay.
Application.
Because I was gonna say, if they, if they need to be organized in the next six weeks, it's not a lot of time.
Right. Yeah.
Madam Chair, first, you know, thank you as always for all this work. I just had a couple of questions as far as the money and decking's not cheap. I'm assuming you've gotten some estimates and this is enough money to satisfy the demand. Is that right?
So previously, there were only three on-street parklets. And we actually used the, the figures. So when, so Needham applied through the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant a couple of years ago, and we have the public parklets that this past season were in front of Greensfield on Great Plains Avenue. I got in touch with the vendor just to get the updated prices to make sure. And it actually turns out to be a Needham company.
Oh, great.
Strangely enough. So those are updated prices as of last. So those are updated prices as of the last couple of months.
Oh, perfect. Okay. And then on the other side of the coin, I've spoken with like a business owner in Newton who's seeing that, you know, when they're using still these parking lots and people are now getting back to work and everything else, it's starting to crowd into and impact businesses. Are we seeing that in Needham or do you? I love this more than anything. So, you know, I'm not trying to be this devil's advocate, but I just wanna make sure as we move ahead that now that people are getting back to work, it's not, you're not hearing complaints yet.
Yeah. I would say that the increased foot traffic that is coming from the outdoor dining is benefiting the surrounding businesses. So overall, I would say that there is widespread support for outside dining using public parking spaces.
Nice traffic. But thank you so much.
That's a good thing.
Heidi. I just want to say thank you for your work in putting some structure on this. I think it's fantastic and novel that Needham is out in front and regularizing this cuz I think it's a huge benefit, not only for patrons, but for the businesses just to have that stability. So you're right, the rules keep changing and that applies to everything COVID related. So it's nice for them to have, to understand what's gonna happen and what they can achieve. And so I appreciate your efforts on this and of course, the effort of town meeting who, who made this happen. So thank you.
Just a thought. I love the lively street scene. It's great. I think it adds a lot to Needham. The 750 covers the, it doesn't cover the cost of the meters nor the barriers. Who, the DPW puts barriers in, right?
Yeah, the barriers are town-owned and DPW installs them and removes them.
Okay.
And the 750, as I recall, roughly covers the cost of replacing barriers, roughly.
I can repull up the estimate from when we discussed it.
We had that as a factor. I know when we were looking at setting that price.
Yeah, we did build out the cost of the labor, the cost of the barriers. If I'm recalling correctly, the total cost, I believe, was like twenty seven hundred, like between three and four thousand, depending on how big of a parklet you have, you know, jay, how many barriers, what the revenue loss is. So that's the cost of the town.
Okay. And then a 750 for a restaurant, their indoor square foot cost would be considerably higher. So this is.
Then 750, yeah.
There's still way ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it does expand that business area.
Right. Thank you for your support.
Do you have any sense of whether, my sense is we're not maxing out on meters, but I don't know what we're, you know, there was one point where we had like almost no meter revenue and we're certainly back having meter revenue, but is there some sense of, you know, what percentage of overall meter time is?
I can confer with our other assistant town manager and get back to you.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question.
It might be interesting to see how that tracks over time. That would give us some sense of what's going on.
Yep. I can also add to that, as you know, we're undergoing a parking study right now and STNTAC is examining all of this very closely. So we will have more to share in the next several weeks on all of that.
If there's anybody listening who hasn't taken the parking study, they can find a link to the parking study on the town website, I believe.
The 19th.
Yes, through the 19th. So we encourage you to give feedback. Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Town Manager's Report and she's got a long list this evening.
And we're starting off with Miles Tucker, who's gonna walk through the board through staff work towards the board's goal to modernize the non-criminal disposition bylaw and the fine schedule therein.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Here today is Kate mentioned to talk about non-criminal disposition and a potential and recommended Warren article towards the goal, towards the board's goal of, it is the penalty section here. The background is, and this work, by the way, is, was done with Town Council Chris Heap, as well as all relevant department directors from police, fire department, Department of Public Works, Health and Human Services, Planning and Conservation. Huge team effort. So all this work is just some of that. Why is this needed? Basically, documents that are updated in serials such as the general bylaws over time incrementally by town meeting. They tend to eventually end up with some inconsistencies where one thing that was added in doesn't quite reference the other, doesn't quite reference the other. And then suddenly you're in a document where there's a few things that just don't line up. And in talking with town council, this is a relatively common procedure for general bylaws for municipalities, especially those with town meeting style of government. So what this effectively is, is a, an effort towards good governance, goal six governance. And has actually been pretty informative in talking to all of department directors and understanding from a staff perspective, who actually touches these things and was actually a good exercise in understanding each other's responsibilities, how the departments work themselves. So in the packet here, you'll see a cleaned up as well as a marked up version of basically the penalty structure. And without going through every single one of these, the intent of the proposed Warren article, and this would be an amendment to the general bylaw, so it would have to go to town meeting as a Warren article, is to eliminate references to penalties and enforcement entities, enforcement entities, meaning this will be enforced by the police or the director of public works or anyone designated by the town manager. Eliminate, and the penalties, so some of the bylaws actually state it shall be a penalty of $25 or $50. We'll take that out of a text and include it in a chart in a matrix just like this in the summary section of the general bylaws, which already exists. There's a penalty summary section, section eight of the general bylaws that currently has these all listed out in narrative format. And talking with town council, he not, not only said that you could do this, but it would probably be preferable. It would make updating this a lot easier moving forward and provide a standard for future Warren articles that could have a penalty associated with a bylaw or non-disposition to simply know that we don't put anything in terms of enforcement or penalty in the text and we can just add a row into a matrix to help alleviate us having to do this frequently. And so after sort of discussing what that format would look like, met with those relevant department heads and we talked through each of the items where there was a discrepancy either in the text of the bylaw in the summary section or there was simply no reference to a penalty or an enforcement entity in either the bylaw or the summary section, or there's nothing in the bylaw, but there's something in the summary section. So those are the basic sort of discrepancies we looked at. We went through every single line of the bylaws and all of the penalties and came forward with this chart here. One, there are no added non-criminal dispositions here. So it's not like we're saying there's new rules. There are no new rules. This simply clarifies what the penalty is for if you break the rules and who would levy said penalty. Of note, penalties are capped at $300. That is per mass general law, so we can't charge over $300. And one of the other standardizations made was on the, on the recommendation of the police department to standardize their penalties at $50 across the board for violations of police general bylaws. The rationale, especially for, there's some, there's, there's quite a variety. So why have coasting, which is using a motorized scooter in a public street, be the same penalty as discharging a firearm on a public space? The reason being is if you're discharging a public, if you're discharging a firearm in a public space, you are almost certainly committing other misdemeanors or felonies and the town's bylaw would be the least of your worries. And $300 nowadays does not have the weight it did when mass general law was passed limiting us at $300. So that's sort of the rationale behind why are they all gonna be the same, even if the action and their consequences in the grand scheme of things is quite disparate. And we will have a draft text, which town council has submitted, it's just not included in this packet of the actual text of the bylaw, which town council did a fantastic job in going through line by line and recommended to town meeting update article for update section 3.1.1.3 to remove X, Y, and Z. So it's pretty comprehensive in an administrative manner. So that's the 30,000-foot overview and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, the board may have.
So I do have some questions and presumably other people do as well. Thank you for pulling all this together, Miles, the, with Chris. My first question would be, is there a way that the bylaws can be written in such a way that the fines can be outside the bylaws? So that if we were to need to choose to, need to, whatever it might be, revisit a fine or who is responsible for it or something like that, you could do that more easily than going to town meeting?
No.
I mean.
How many guys does that find?
Town meeting has to set fines. Okay. Right.
So we're can set fees, not fines.
Another quaint, quaint piece of New England history here.
I will say that the chart aspect, I mean, in the old version, they were alphabetical and on occasion, a writer would use the old version, so they would have a T, but there already was a T.
Right.
So, you know, I was just being generous a little bit about the, the opportunity for error, scrivener error on that kind of alphabetical system.
There, there were some items in here that I found when I read through it that I wondered what they even were. Allowing a dog to be found uncontrollable by the select board. So the fine gets levied by any sworn police officer, but I'm sure there must be a process that that has to go through. I mean, the it was just kind of an interesting one that's in here. I was also curious, as I read demolition of a historic building without a permit, right? It got moved to $300 per day. I'm, I'm not sure if that was what we intended because in fact, if somebody demolished a building without a permit, how many days would you know that they should be fined for? It has the potential to rack up pretty significantly, especially if they should have been on a six-month delay. I guess I wasn't clear that that was really what our intent was.
So in, but the building commission was also part of these discussions as well. I feel the reference Dave Roach here. And this was actually quite a discussion. And speaking of this, basically, the demolition of a historic home, as you referenced, you, Madam Chair, is must be brought before the historical commission. And in order to demolish the home, you need to pull permits. The building inspector would flag this as this is a historical home. You can't, I will not grant this permit until you go to the historical commission. If they say, so he won't do that. And if they start demolishing the home anyways, A, they're in violation of several other safety codes, but they may also be up for 183 days, fined $300 a day for demolishing a historic home, which is a substantial penalty. It is.
It is. Okay. I don't know that that had been our intent originally because I think when, when we put in the bylaw, there was other discussion. And of course, what was clear the, the previous time was that the fine was $300, right, for doing that. It's, it's sort of interesting that town meeting has the right to do that. We've sort of completely changed the interpretation of what town meeting granted in this. So it just gives me, I guess, a little bit of pause. Not that I disagree with where you've landed. So don't misunderstand, but I, I do, it felt to me like a significant change. Possibly. One of the other ones that I looked at and I thought the amount was, again, understated, was the one in this case, removing underground fuel tanks without a permit. I mean, I guess I would have put the maximum fine, but I understand now that we don't have the right to set that. So maybe there's a whole different set of it. The challenge with, with fines that are set in bylaws is there may be challenges with where they're set.
This one is per offense, so that would presumably be only once.
That is only once, right? But the costs of that kind of thing are high. So I probably would have wanted to levy whatever the maximum was we could do or the risks of what could happen.
So this is of course why we're not asking you to vote tonight. And so this is a long process. The, the, I think the balance that the, that the initial review is if you go to town meeting and you say, this is mostly the same as it was before, if you wanna change more, we can, but the board can also, you know, up to $300 and adding per offense, you can review these all if you'd like.
Can I just ask, so in both of those examples, removing the underground fuel tanks and demolishing the historic home, the fine doesn't seem to be enough of a deterrent to keep someone from doing this. For example, if a developer wanted to demolish a historic home, it might be that that one, that $300 times 180 days would be a price that they found acceptable. So when, when something like this happens and they demolish a home, for example, without a permit or remove a fuel tank without a permit, is there something else that happens that is criminal or is administratively prohibitive?
Well, violation of the bylaw is, there are criminal penalties. The non-criminal is the alternative to that. So.
So is it one or the other?
Yes, one or the other, right?
So I'm kind of thinking those things are.
I can't answer that one.
Yeah, one or the other.
I don't know either cuz I don't know that there's a criminal option for these. If you.
Maybe on the fuel tank. It's less clear to me on the house.
Both of those seem like fairly serious.
Any, any person violating any provision of the bylaw may be penalized by indictment or complaint brought in district court. That's under 8.2.1. Non-criminal is because we're not gonna go into court for coasting on the sidewalk, so we can charge this $50 fine as town meeting. So I think the, but the conversation is, is great. I mean, if, if the, I think what we heard at town meeting was why is coasting $5 and bow and arrow is 50? Are the things. So that's, we're hoping for your feedback on that too. It does seem, it did seem to the team that demolishing a historic home would be more than a one-day fines. So, but maybe the fuel tank should be the same.
Just feels to me like it's, it's significant and there's significant risk that that fuel tank has leaked and we need to be sure that, that it hasn't and process in place for that. I just.
The permit is the, is the process that we have.
Permit is the process.
So if you ignore that, then, and that's your only punishment, you know, then maybe that's not enough. It seems like that should not be non-criminal.
You, you can, you could always pursue criminal if you wanted.
So I think, I guess my view initially is that all the regularizing and pulling it out into the table, that's huge. So important to go forward there. I do think kind of this, it's worth thinking about some of these. I mean, if we only have up to $300, that's not a lot of lot. But, um, but I think sort of, I, I think the inclination and the recommendation of the, the town staff to kind of standardize penalties by department area, that makes a lot of sense. It's having to look up each one because they're all slightly a little bit different. It gets crazy. I understand that.
So I think the frequency is probably where you would want to maybe focus your attention.
Yeah, right. Madam Chair? Sorry, no, I'm sorry. You had. I, um, Miles, this is awesome. This is great. I was trying to go through the charter and the bylaws flipping back and forth. And you're right, this is, the matrix is so much easier. This will be, this is what town meeting will pass, right? The, the make, the chart. This would be published in
Yeah.
the bylaws. Okay. Which is fantastic. I love. I would vote sort of, I lean towards just keeping it clean for now. Let's pass, get this through. And then because there are a lot of other things like sale of cigarettes by machines, I don't think those are allowed anyways. There's a mention in here somewhere about on a sidewalk, you can lawfully push an invalid, which I don't think we use that term anymore. And so there's a lot of strange things in it, plus allowing livestock to graze on public lands. That's not my problem right now, but the only thought is maybe we number these, put a chart because otherwise they don't appear to be. I don't, you wouldn't alphabetize them.
They're in, they're in the order of the bylaw.
Okay, but could be numbered because somehow I don't know how you would say like quickly flip through to.
It's here.
I see, I see.
You could put the page number on when we print it.
Yeah.
It still does have to correspond to the bylaw. The bylaw is not going anywhere, right?
Yeah.
But this is, yeah, but if you were to scan through, what is the, what is the penalty for this? You've effectively are flipping through every page to find it.
Look it out a column with the page number based on the current publication.
And then the new bylaws placed chronologically.
I'm gonna tell you, that's risky.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but there must be some way to solve that you can.
I think people are gonna go to the, aren't people gonna go to the bylaw? Understand that they have a fine, right? And then they're gonna take their bylaw number and look for it here. That's what I think is gonna happen. So this effectively works as the order and as the number.
Okay, that's a count.
That is the bylaw. So that's how it works. Yeah.
So if I understood, Madam Chair, that one proposal would be to create a matrix with no changes to amounts or enforcement entities as a starting point or to do some. I think some of the enforcement entities I do think we should do.
It feels to me like the reg. It feels to me like the regularizing of all the police ones and things like that completely makes sense. Otherwise they're wasting time looking up to see what the fee is in a particular area fine. Yeah. But, but I almost feel like the, the idea that we like try to do it as cleanly as possible and then say to town meeting, we will hold a public hearing on this. You can all bring your thoughts and ideas. We're happy to take input and we'll bring it back with changes based on people's feedback.
Okay.
So are you saying to pass this and then make changes or to hold off on taking it to town meeting until the changes are made?
I would think pass this and then do another round to make changes. That would have been my first inclination, I think, because I think there's a lot of benefit of getting it at least cleaned up this way so that people can even read it in an organized fashion. It's not, well, Kate, do you think we have time for another public hearing?
I, I think we might end up with a lot of floor amendments if we don't.
Yeah.
For not thoughtful about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, of course we have time. Yeah, we can have a hearing on this. It's, it's January. We, you know, we have a proposal that would be.
Right.
I guess just a couple of things. I like the idea of a, as it is with the changes and, and saying to town meeting, because there I know, because I've done two of these bylaw amendments, that people are going to start questioning, what is this? What is that? Why do we have this? Why do we have that? And I think that's a total separate discussion, because I can go through here and say, why can't I, why can't a kid ride a, a bike on a sidewalk around the common? Um, apparently that's not allowed. So I think that that will, that should be changed separately because, because we're going to get hung up for hours on that. I remember I did the bow and I did the trash. And we started saying, why do we have this? And so I just, that's what I would like to do. Secondly, I think the per offense is confusing because sometimes, uh, the conservation commission, it can mean per day. Um, as we looked at with, you know, you know, other other categories can be per day, like, uh, violation of the sign by law, it says $50 per offense. I'm assuming if you have that sign out for multiple days, that's an offense every day, right? That's how they look at it. Sometimes. So I just would like to clarify the per offense and per day. I know that happened with the arrows. It's like, oh, well, someone can just start shooting 10 arrows. No, each arrow is an offense. So right, I, I just remember this conversation. So I just, I think the per offense is important. Lastly, I'll say if you tore something down without a permit, you also get double permit fine. And there are other implications, as we talked about, for actually when you want to get that permit. So I think that will work its way out as, along with the fuel tanks. If you did that, you know, the, the DEP will come down and they'll issue a fine because it's leaking. And I think there are other ways to find people besides this. So covered a lot of ground, but this is great. I guess just getting back to the original question, I would like to kind of focus on these and then have the conversation for, should this be an offense or should this not at another time? Like female dogs roaming well in heat are not allowed, which, but then also you allowing a dog to be off leash is also not allowed. So there are just a lot in here that we could get into.
Ma'am chair, so are you proposing that we just, just do the matrix of what exists now and tell town meeting, we're only making it into a matrix? And then we'll come back to you and have hearings? Or do you want to have hearings on what you want to? I'm, I'm, I'm still not clear on that. Did you, Miles, did you have some?
There, there is a challenge by only doing the matrix in that there are contradictions in the bylaw as it exists between the penalty section and the bylaws themselves. So some of those by nature will have to be resolved.
If we're going to do that, we should do your updated version. I mean, this, this makes a lot more sense than, than not. Why would we, why would we reorganize it just to accentuate the holes?
So patch, fix the holes.
Yeah. It feels, it feels to me like we could go with this. Although I might still think we could have $300 on our underground tank, but
Sure.
Um, but that we really are going to need to say to, to town meeting, we learned by reading these that there's a lot of them that we think need some discussion. I mean, so we really want to take this in a couple of steps. I just think we could, we could have a public hearing. But I think as Matt says, that will be a long
Yes.
hearing. And it's more than one hearing probably, and certainly more than one discussion. It feels like we need to ask town meeting to be a little bit patient with us to say, okay, we surfaced an issue. It's going to take some work. Can, can we get this far and then come back?
I agree.
I'm, maybe I'm being obtuse, but how, get this far in what, what would you bring to town meeting?
This, what Miles just did.
Okay, with all the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. And then hear from people.
We're talking about whether or not, like violating the wetlands or failing to obtain a required fire department license for something should be actually a criminal offense and not a noncriminal or or punishable in some other fashion than three hundred bucks. Because like, what's to deter you from doing whatever you want?
Do you, uh, so I'm still, I'm still thinking about the floor meeting and how long this is going to be.
Question, you know, and rightfully so, they're going to question some of these that are outdated, even as Kevin said, pushing what an invalid on a sidewalk or again, using a bicycle on the sidewalk in Needham Square, Needham Heights.
There are a lot of unintended consequences.
They're going to say, why do we have that? Can we just remove that? I vote to amend. I would just say, right now, before this is the matrix, the four corners are the panel, however we can frame it. And then we will come back and look at that, study those different ones or criminal disposition for other ones.
I mean, you could authorize an entire bylaw review, right? I mean, some of these things have been there since the 18th century.
Correct.
That's something we could commit to.
Okay.
And maybe sending it out with a cover memo that says, here's step one.
We understand some of these are.
And we're really going to ask you to work with us on the floor of town meeting. This is not the place. It's clear there needs to be some more discussion, but we need to make this fair for everybody by making it clear.
The four corners would just be major.
Yeah.
Right.
And pulling the fines out of the each article. So it's a bigger, it's a pretty large born article, but.
It's, it's substantial.
Like that. That's a lot of work. So.
Yeah.
And, and I will say just to, to know one thing, I know we're talking about what happens if criminal, what happens if all this. An overarching part of the discussion with the department heads and the deputies was 95% of the time, it's that people don't know they're violating something and that they're extraordinarily receptive to, um, please, please stop. And they do it. Um, and so at the bottom of the, the, the matrix is a, um, the enforcement entity has the ability to issue a verbal or written warning first, which in 95% of the consequences for any of these is what normally happens.
Yeah.
People want to do the right thing and something, most of the time they just don't realize they're doing something wrong.
But again, just manager last point is the per offense. Again, I would like to just go through if we could, and I can do the same and say, you know, when would it be per day or when would it actually be? That is the offense. You know, you obstructed a sidewalk without a permit. Fine. That's a one time thing. Um, but some of this other stuff could be day to day to day. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that it will continue.
So do board members want to send us ideas on the frequency?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we can all take a look at that and see.
Green for next time, some other color.
Matt, did you also make a suggestion that some, if somebody does something without a permit, that their permit fee doubles? Is that something that is?
Well, that is technically, the building department has the right to, when you do apply for that permit as a violation, to have a double fee on it. If you start work without a permit. It's already, that's within the building department's purview.
That is, that already exists.
That exists. And no, it's never happened to me.
I didn't even ask that.
I know. That's just, it's like, how would you know? But yes, that's true.
This is amazing work.
Yes, amazing work.
I do feel it's responsive to what Tom meeting had asked for.
Yeah.
It is. And although I do think town meeting is going to be shocked when they see how much the length of this with all the detail of what's coming out of all these different, um, articles in the bylaw. Yeah. All right. Thank you. So we will all take a look at kind of the frequency. This is a good place to start. We're going to try to contain it to this for the most part and, um, then move forward from there.
Thanks, Ma.
Thank you.
Ma'am chair, maybe next year, when you discuss your goals, we could have, you know, do a, a section of the bylaw every year, kind of looking at.
Right.
Because there's always an unintended consequence when you take something out.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're losing some of our institutional memory on some of our department managers of, you know, I did use that once or something. So.
Okay. Onto the next thing.
It's time for town meeting again. So we'd ask the board to open the warrant for the 2023 annual town meeting, which we would, um, uh, bring back for closure on February 14th. The, um, citizens petitions, if any, are due the first Monday in February, which I believe is the sixth. So we'll see what happens with those. Um, this is a very preliminary list of items that have been identified. Those that are in the capital plan. Those that are submitted in the, um, in the budget process. These are the items that have been submitted for the community preservation. That's not saying in any way that the CPC will fund them, but we tend to include them in the preliminary list. So we make sure we have captured everything that might be in the warrant.
Do we have, um, the town clerks?
No, it's not in here yet, right? Yeah, that would be under the general articles.
Man of chair, move that the board vote to open the warrant for the 2023 annual town meeting.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero. Thank you.
At your last meeting in December, the board, um, uh, had an in-depth discussion about the transportation planning proposal that the, um, our tech, the
Transportation Planning Committee.
TPRC, um, had proposed. One of those items, which is the Mobility Planning Coordinating Committee, requires action by town meeting to remove the transportation committee first, if that's their, their decision. But the board can vote to, um, approve the revised composition in charge for the rail trail advisory committee. And the revised title composition in charge for what used to be trans, uh, traffic management advisory committee to be now the transportation safety.
Any other questions from people? And I would just say that both of these, um, all of these committees are ready to work in, in the new framework. Um, we've just, uh, set a date for the transportation, for me to go in and meet with the transportation committee. Uh, members who were not part of the discussion process, so, uh, we'll be meeting with them as well, uh, later this month. And, um, there is in accordance with the proposal that we brought a, uh, kind of a midwinter look, um, that the DPW will do at what's proposed for the spring, summer construction cycle, uh, where this group will be coming together to, uh, work with her and to talk about that, uh, in public so that we can make some of those things more evident for people than we have in the past.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion. If there's no further questions or we'll get one more shot at that, but.
Okay, ma'am chair, I make a motion that the board vote to adopt the composition in charge for the rail trail advisory committee and the transportation safety committee.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero. Thank you. And now our favorite historic district committee.
Also at your last meeting, the board, uh, discussed this with the historic commission. And this is the proposal, um, that you reviewed the charge and composition of the single parcel historic district study committee, which would, uh, move the town closer to the number, number of steps that might get you to a fall time meeting to establish this district. Um, just a reminder, we did talk about this yesterday. We do need to get, um, nominations from the American Institute of Architects, the Board of Realtors and the Needham History Center. And, um, just encouraging anybody who, um, falls in any of those categories that we, we would like them to let us know.
Madam Chair, move that the board vote to approve the proposed charge and composition for the single parcel historic district study committee.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero.
So my next item is, uh, a preview of what's to come at your next meeting where we'll present the, uh, town managers recommended annual budget for FY24. And we've included for your, um, information, the budgets that were submitted for FY24, um, along with the FY23 current budget. We, in our budgeting process, we, the departments submit their base budgets, which are allowed to include any contractual increases. For instance, price of gas or price of diesel or, um, terms of, of, of energy, um, have gone up, that those are included in the base budget. And then they are, um, invited and encouraged to submit, uh, performance, uh, items under what we call DSR four, which is the department spending request form four. Um, so that if any department has a service, um, delivery increase, programmatic contractual service or staff that they are looking to add, they can submit that. So these numbers that you have are inclusive of all of the requests of all of the departments. The budget that I present to you in two weeks will not include all of the requests from all of the departments for a variety of reasons. And, um, you'll get a sense here of the, of the, um, changes to the budgets that are, um, just happening, um, through, uh, changes to existing costs. One of the things to note is that under line three and, um, line five and line seven, their assistant town manager director of finance looks at the number of full-time equivalents that are, uh, proposed in the budget and then increases these accordingly by a formula. So if, um, there's probably 20 or so that are, uh, positions that are recommended. If any of those are not recommended in, in the final analysis, these numbers will also go down. So not just the salary numbers, but the health insurance, pension costs and OPEB and workers' comp associated with, um, associated with those positions. One other note that we did estimate, um, a significant increase in the Minuteman High School assessment, but we underestimated. Um, so the, if you see that on line 20, um, we've highlighted in yellow. That's the estimate that's provided by the Minuteman School. We, we, we were expecting, um, increase because, uh, we have increased enrollment, which is very positive. And, um, there, there are increasing capital costs associated with the high school. And, um, the school has, is not being able to rely on outside tuitions because they're being filled up by uh, member communities. And in fact, in, um, the incoming classes are completely filled up. So these are good problems. It's going to cost the town more, but that was always disclosed when we talked about building that new school. So that may number, that number is not final, but it is a better estimate than the one that we have provided previously. We had a 15% and this is a 10%, a 20%. Then, um, on the third sheet, this lists out specifically that what we call the DSR four, um, request, the performance improvement request. So we'll be working through these. We've worked with, um, the, each of the departments has had a liaison meeting during the fall. They're also working through the finance committee, which is starting in December, becomes a concurrent project, process until the end of January, when our budget is due. So that gives you a sense of, um, what the departments are looking for in FY24. And the very last page are what we call the DSR five request. And these are items that are not expected, um, to be part of the operating budget, but they're not capital. So, uh, sometimes they're one time and sometimes they're items like the facility maintenance article, which is we routinely have in the warrant as a financial warrant article, but we don't build into the operating budget because it's, it's strictly, um, because it's a warrant article. It can cross over fiscal years and much of our work happens in the summer. So it's very difficult for us, if we were to put that million dollars in the, in the operating budget, um, we would come to a halt in June and then everything would have to gear back up in July. All of our contracts can't get signed and that kind of thing. So that's one of the ones. We do have the benefit, a number of the items that are requested are multi-year items too. And that's another benefit for putting them in the warrant article. So that's a preview. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the specific items or the amounts.
Kate, looking at the DSR fives, the, the one that says opioid recovery and mitigation fund is, does that mean they're anticipating the funds would come from that fund?
Okay, I might need to phone a friend on this.
There is such a fund that came from the settlement.
So we have a number of settlements. We have been awarded, um, in a number of the settlements, a specific dollar amount, and we have received, already received $217,288. Unfortunately, one of the provisions, um, that was being considered by the legislature would have allowed us as a municipal entity to reserve those funds absolutely to only be used for opioids. But that hasn't passed yet. So they come in as a general fund receipt. But we're obligated by the But we're obligated by the terms of the settlement and my signature on it to spend the opioids. So we receive the funds. So then we are asking town meeting to appropriate them for that purpose, for which they would only be used. It would be very beneficial if the state could get that passed because we expect thirty years worth of these payments and there may be more payments coming. So having thirty warrant articles is gonna be it's not the best mechanism. Yes. And the team led by Katie is working on proposals to spend those money and we'll have examples for Tommy and how we're gonna use them.
And the other question I was gonna ask, just looking at this, if you could remind me, please, town owned land surveys, I think this has been a multi-year effort
Yes.
to survey all the different town properties. And so we're just continuing.
Yes.
I don't know what year it is of how many years.
We did one or two of them. You know, there'd been a lot of conversation about whether the surveys should be part of big capital projects. So for instance, if you're doing the Emory Grover, it's easy enough to do the survey with it. Sometimes you need it before. But there are lots of parcels that we own that we don't actually have boundaries on. And it's really the goal of the Department of Public Works that we know where all of our land is. And they're prioritizing certain parcels that, you know, might be needed in the future or that would never be the subject of a major capital project. So we will have the director and town engineer and to talk to you about what they propose and why they, why they need them. But it, it is really a good idea to. Usually you find out at the very last minute that you needed a survey and it's better to happen in advance.
Right.
Questions? Can you talk a little bit about the, the first line, the I C M A Local Government Management Fellow?
Yes, this is directly related to one of the, the goals of the select board, which is to help the town improve its recruitment and retention of staff. And you'll recall that last summer, we had an I C M A Local Government group made a series of recommendations that we would like to start implementing. And it's given the, the, the level of day-to-day work in the H R department and the level of staffing, we're finding it hard to prioritize some of that real strategic thinking about how to move these forward. I C M A offers this program in which there's a fellow who is usually somebody just coming out of M P A school, who would come on a temporary basis for this kind of assignment. So it is to directly, it's a two-year program and it's to directly implement that recruitment and retention. It's also a way to, for, for us to determine, to evaluate and to measure whether we think that, for instance, there might, there maybe should be an ongoing fellowship program or that there is needed staff in the H R department. So that gives us some, some data for that.
So that request is for salary for two years?
Salary and also there are some, under the I C M A program, some mandatory expenses like access to conferences, materials, and it's also the expenses associated with the benefits for the person.
Okay. And is there some crossover with the outside recruiting services as well?
The outside recruiting service is really targeted at, for instance, we, after I think more, two rounds of trying to find a treasurer, we just, there was just, we weren't, we weren't succeeding in recruiting the person. So we hired an outside consultant who actually, I believe, has found us treasurer. So that's more like a headhunter kind of a service specializing in H R. It may be that the that once we get the fellowship and there's a program that's put in place, there's ideas that mean that we won't need. Certainly, I have to say, significant recessions help us in recruitment. I hope that's not in our forecast, but you know, it is of course sometime in our forecast. So we think that in the next two years, the, the climate, particularly in the finance area, I have to say, in the very technical municipal I T, municipal finance and some of the more technical public works positions that they're really just cycling around. The people are, you know, calling other towns and trying to get people to apply and that kind of thing. So that is a, a time bound as well. The, so that's one of the reasons why they're warrant articles is because we know we need it for the next couple of years, but we don't know if we need it after that. And then temporary staffing, we had a program of temporary staffing, I think it was maybe four or five years ago, we had a warrant article that, you know, you, you might have somebody in an office of three and two people are out, you know, you bring somebody in from the temp service to go, keep it going. And we have now run out of that money. So we would expect that to be several years as well.
Okay. Madam Chair, just to refresh my memory, the D S R four for the building design and construction department, is that what was put in the warrant article? Is that, is that a current position or is that?
No, it would be a new position.
It would be a new position. Okay. We've gotten all employees except for the P I O, right, from the warrant articles into our budget?
Yes.
The P I O is the last one.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions about any of those from folks? We did hear from the finance committee when we met with them that they are not actually in favor of that one position. I think they haven't taken a formal vote on that, but that their initial sense was they wanted to discuss that one
Okay.
in greater depth.
Okay.
And I was just a final reminder that the, the, and the Needham Diversity Initiative Annual Martin Luther King Event is a week away, Monday, the sixteenth at ten o'clock at Needham High School.
Any other comments? No? So any committee reports?
None.
All right.
Move adjourned.
So we have an executive session on our agenda tonight that we will not be holding, just so members of the public know. It turns out that we don't have anything to discuss tonight. So we won't have that. So I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Four zero. We are adjourned.